All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for June 3rd, 2024. Who would please stand for their invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. God, we thank you for your many, many blessings. We thank you for our school system, and we pray that you will continue to bless our school system and cover our kids and staff as they enjoy their summer break. We pray for their safety and their well return. These blessings we ask in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item number three, citizens address the board. Okay, um, item four, it's approval of the work session agenda. Have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Mr. McGyver, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, um, number five, Dr. Williams.
Okay, so we just had graduation, woo-hoo! It's always a fun night. A lot of hard work goes into that night, but it's always fun to celebrate our seniors. Um, I did ask Prissy for an update. We had eighty-one that graduated, seventy-nine walked across the stage who chose not to. Uh, there were seventy-seven in this actual cohort, and seventy-six of those graduated, so our graduation rate should be around ninety-nine percent. Um, five juniors graduated early, and three of the seniors that graduated earned their accelerated career diploma in welding. So, good numbers.
Absolutely.
Good numbers. Um, Mr. Mossel was gonna do a coastal planes update, but he and I both forgot that he was out this week for the Homeland Security Conference. So, he sent me, he sent me some notes. Um, you know, with coastal planes this year with the new changes, if we sent stu-, if we sent students there who were not eighteen and had not been withdrawn for a certain amount of time, they still counted on our graduation rate, and we had to pay FTE for that. So, Senate Bill 405, which did not pass, was trying to change that, um, age back to sixteen. But, um, in between that not passing and other things happening up at the Capitol, um, coastal can now take students who are not eighteen if they have left MCA and said they were gonna be homeschooled. They're not considered a dropout at that point. So then they can take them and they come off our books and go to their books. So, um, currently, we have twenty-three students enrolled with another thirteen that are interested. Um, we have eight staff members, two mentors, two content area teachers, a special ed teacher, receptionist counselor, site director. And right now, they're open Tuesdays and Thursdays from four to seven thirty. They will be open throughout the summer. They feed them dinner every Thursday night and snacks every Tuesday night. I did not know that until today, so, just an update there. If we get up to, I think Ricky told me, that's Ricky is the superintendent, I think he told me if we get to thirty-five, we can become a full site, not a satellite site, and then they'll pay us to be here. They would pay us like seventy-five thousand dollars a year to be a site, so. So, that's our coastal update. Twenty-three.
So, we need twelve more, Elsie.
Well, she said thirteen are interested, so.
Thirteen are interested, so we might get it.
But we need all thirteen.
Oh goodness, that's all I have for student success.
All right, Ms. Tammy.
Okay, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, the FY25 budget, um, if you all approve, approve it. It is the general, it consists of the general fund at eighteen million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, which is one point six percent o- over, uh, last year's general fund budget. It also includes, uh, one point two million, uh, for the school nutrition budget, and eight hundred and fifty thousand for the projects, and it also has one point two million, which is our annual energy lease, uh, payment for a total consolidated budget for FY25 of twenty-two million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Are there any questions?
I don't have any, but I wanna, I guess I need to say this for the record, Ms. Lane, that we're doing the discussion of the tentative FY budget, and this will be our public hearing number one. And we have no one here to speak for. Thank you. Any questions from anybody? All right, um, number two, just our discussion of the minutes. If you'll look over those, like Dr. Williams or Ms. Lane know if you see any errors. All right, back to Ms. Tammy for the financial reports for May.
So, if we go to page one, general operating account, we begin the month with just over three million. We had one point two million in receipts, uh, dispersment of one point six million, leaving, uh, two point seven eight million in the general operating account at May 31st. General fund revenues and expenditures, um, just wanna note, uh, the add-on of taxes. Uh, we have currently received eight point four million in the add-on of taxes, which is ninety-two percent of the net levy amount. And total revenues are sixty point six million, which is ninety-one percent of our eighteen point two million. Um, so, it looks like local revenues are gonna come in and in line. We're in good shape there, and I anticipate the state revenues to come in, you know, as budgeted, so we're in good shape revenue wise for FY24.
Cool.
Uh, total expenditures, fourteen point two million. That's at seventy-six percent of the, uh, in budgeted revenues of eighteen point seven million. Keep in mind that, um, they, that it looks really low, but in June, we have the salary and benefit accruals for the July and August, uh, ten month and four weeks, so that will catch up in, uh, in June, by the end of June. General fund, uh, general fund fund equity, we're currently at six point three million in the general fund. School nutrition account, uh, balance of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighteen in the school nutrition account. Uh, that fund balance is three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, twenty-four dollars. Next page. Fund balance, okay. Next page, local projects, uh, began the month with one point two million in the local projects account. Uh, we had expenditures of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, just over a million dollars in the local projects account. We've still got some open purchase orders out there, um, before we got the year in the projects account. Uh, money market account, uh, nice interest in May, about four hundred and nine dollars. We've got four nearly ninety-one thousand dollars in the each money market account.
I think I'm gonna let the school invest my money.
Okay, four years of insurance payments and graduate graduation gift. We're good. We're looking good over here, guys. I think we can do this.
That's probably the, that's the majority of our, uh, fund balance, our six million dollar fund balance is sitting in that money market account. And finally, the debt service account, uh, we have one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, uh, for each class receipt for May, which is eleven percent over May of last year. So, we saw a nice little bounce back on the, uh, class receipts. We've got a total fund balance, uh, in the Georgia Fund One of four point two. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
All right, very good. Thank you. Let me talk about those stuff.
Please.
All right, so I told you we were gonna have some policies we wanted to at least visit. Not a lot, but, um, well, there'll be some more in July. Um, so the first one is GBRI professional personnel, personal leaves and absences. There's only one change, and that is due to House Bill 1010. The maximum amount of paid parental leave was increased from a hundred and twenty hours to two hundred and forty hours. So, that is the only change on that one.
Wow, that doubled.
It did, from three weeks to six weeks.
Wow.
Yep. Um, for field G, the next one, GBRK, if you will, I'm sorry, that, the next one is professional vacations. Um, several people had had, had asked if we would go back from twenty days and make it a little more, 'cause they have a hard time using all their days. Some people, especially in years when we have lots of Chromebooks come in and things like that. I won't call any names.
We can always swap a Chromebook out for a yes.
She's after that Chromebook, Rusty. Um, I actually, I didn't change a lot. I just, um, I cleaned up. I made it, I just made it a little more concise, I guess is the word. So, um, Tammy and I discussed, we think a fair amount, I mean, and across the state, it goes from zero to how many they have. So, we went with thirty, we, 'cause that's a, that's like a six-week period, so we thought that was fair. So, if you'll read through that one, um, IFCD, field trip and excursions. I did change that one a good bit. I took out a lot of stuff. I would rather make, um, all the rules and regulations into a procedure at the school level, not in the policy. Um, so it just basically says, it, it still has what field trips and excursions are, that the field trips, uh, for this policy will include both co-curricular and extracurricular. And then it, um, says that, that field trips can be approved without coming to you guys if it's a day trip in Georgia, an overnight trip in Georgia or day trips to Jacksonville. And I talked to Missy about that, because we do have a lot of trips that go to Jacksonville, but that is so close that we don't feel all of those need to come to the board. But out-of-state field trips that require an overnight stay must still come to you guys. Um, and that was, this is across the board too. I looked, I think I looked at almost every county's field trip policy. Um, some, the board never knows about them, some, the superintendent never knows about them. It's all done at the school level, but I do like, we're small, and I like to know where people are going, so. Anyway, that's, it's, it's a lot shorter, and then the other will be a pol-, uh, regulations at the school level.
Well, this'll cut out all the having to, you know, send email and get this approved, that approved. I mean, as long, I feel, and y'all can, um, speak up, but I feel as long as we know they're going somewhere, then, you know, that, that way we're not having to go back and backtrack and formally approve something that we've done right. When we're, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we're not gonna do that anyway.
Right.
Madam Chair, if you remember, this, y'all talked about that a while back.
Yes, we did. Right. Yeah, we spoke about this months back, and then this was when they had time to actually sit down and go through all these policies to.
We should have been looking at the policies, all the strike holders were bullwinked once they were pulled in after the birthday table.
Okay.
So, once we go back in and do the voting, or you gotta vote them, we'll take those strike off, so, but, and just have the team.
Pull that back up. Like, when you're looking at it. And if you find anything that you think, uh, you don't like the wording of, or some, please let me know. So, everything that's, like, got the strike through, that will disappear. All right, I didn't reinvent the wheel. I used other people's wording. That's why, that's why we have simply, isn't it? You don't have to reinvent the wheel. All right, then IHE promotion and retention. This is one that the high school had asked me to look at. Um, not that we want to change and not hold students accountable. So, let me say that first, because that, you know, I, I told them, I don't want us, I don't want it to ever look like we're weakening our expectations. And the only thing they would like to change is going from ninth grade to tenth grade, not requiring them to pass all four academic subjects, that they pass at least three of the four. So, that would be the only change. So, on that last page, the four would be three, but then the next year, they need to be caught up before they can go to the eleventh grade and so on. Um, I, and not, and I taught ninth graders, and I understand it, 'cause ninth grader, it's a hard year for kids. Not only just hormonal and the transition from middle school where they've walked in lines and done things, you know, in that group for so long, and then they're just like free birds at the high school, and you're having to find your own classes and stuff, so. I, I understand it. It's a little, and, and again, I looked at everybody in the state. It is from one extreme to the other. Some people only do five-eleven-seventeen, like GHSA. Some do five-twelve-eighteen. They have no other criteria on it. So, I felt like that was a fair compromise. And Prissy and Jessica, and I talked about it for a long time, that we didn't want to, 'cause at first, we thought about changing it for every year, and I was like, no, then when they get to their senior year, they're gonna have a false security about, I'm ready to graduate, and then they're not ready to graduate. So, we felt like just doing it for the ninth grade to the tenth grade would be a fair way to help them get caught up, so. That was the only change in that one. And then the last one is JBC, which is about awarding units and transferring credits. And that one, Rusty, if you'll pull it up, I was just gonna change the part about the EOC, because it's not called EECT anymore, but then when I looked at the state policy, it's totally changed since our policy, which was written, mm, twenty-twelve, is that when it was? Anyway, so, I just, I told Elsie, it'd probably be easier if we just delete our whole policy and put in what the state has. So, that's what, it's a lot, but it's there. And it's about how you, for dual enrollment and from technical schools and different things, how we do all that, so, awarding them the credits. So, it's a lot, but we just copied the state rule, one sixty dash five dash one dash point one five, for the record. So, and that was it for policies.
Okay, can, is it, at this point, can we discuss any of these?
We can, absolutely.
All right, so, I'm back to the ninth grade.
Okay.
Credit thing.
Okay.
At some point in time, and it's, it's been more recent than not, we discussed all this and about how we needed to keep these, how important it was for the eighth graders to do their four-year plan and keep them on track. So, and at the middle school, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have an academic clo-, coach for sixth grade, one for seventh grade, one for, or we have a lead teacher. How did that?
We have a, we have lead teachers, but.
Okay, but we have.
The counselor does the graduation plan.
Uh, but no, I'm at middle school.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we have an academic coach for middle school.
We do. Mr. Verger.
Okay, and now, she was the academic coach for all three grades?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, at that point in time, when the eighth graders enter the ninth grade, we only have one academic coach at the high school?
We do.
And then we have the media center?
We have a graduation coach and a counselor.
Okay, so, if the children, if the students are on their four-year plan, and if we have done our due diligence in eighth grade, and they, they have their four-year plan mapped out with an academic coach at the high school, and the, um.
Graduation coach.
Yes. I don't understand why we're backsliding. I don't understand why we're gonna give them another break, because ninth grade's hard.
We don't have to. It's, that's why it's here for discussion.
But, I mean, the high school brought it up, so apparently somebody addressed it.
We had, we had, um, a couple of kids this year that, one actually got into a dual enrollment class by mistake, because they weren't classified as a tenth grader, because they had failed algebra in ninth grade. So, if you fail any of those, if you fail algebra, English, your physical science or biology, whichever you're in, and then your social, if you fail any of those, you can't go up to tenth grade. But when the child got to her dual enrollment class, which was cosmetology, she has totally turned her life around. And she's making As, and she's doing well. They just felt like that sometimes we're holding them back in the ninth grade, and they can't get into those pathways that they would like to get into, that could give them that boost to make better grades.
Will someone be monitoring them, like, part the way through the year to make sure they're going to catch up?
And that was something that Jessica and I discussed, was instead of waiting till May, if you fail, if you're in my, if you're an eighth grader and you failed algebra in the first semester, you need to be back in algebra second semester. Or if you failed English first semester, you need to be back in that class second semester, 'cause they have eight units. And you only need five to move to the next credit, I mean, next year. But we can leave it the way it is. I, it's just there for discussion, so.
I'm inclined to leave it the way it is. I just, you know, the way our schools mapped out, the way our schedules are mapped out, we're doing dual enrollment, we're doing block scheduling, we're doing everything in the world, I personally think, except cooking breakfast for these kids.
Well, we do that too.
We do that too. You know what I mean.
No, I, we're doing everything but taking the test for them.
Exactly, and I'm, I'm not trying to be a hardtail about it, but, um, I'm a no. I mean, I just think it, by the time you reach a freshman year, and those credits are your credits and your choices, your grades are your choice, and if they want a pathway, or if they want their, I mean, it's time for accountability, y'all. I mean, I'm sorry, but.
Good point.
I'm a no.
I told them I'd bring it up, so.
Would there be a way to, for the middle school, like, if they would give input, like, this child is struggling? Or, I mean, that they could let them know, and so that they're like on the radar?
We already do that.
That. Sorry, um.
We do that, and then Scott and I also talked about him looking at offering, 'cause he offers Algebra I for high school credit. He offers, um, Health and PE for high school credit. We talked about him also offering Physical Science for high school credit, because there's not an EOC anymore for that. So, we could give them a high school exam at the end of the year, and if they make an eighty or above, you know, we make, we make the criteria. They could get credit, and that would get, give them an option to have another one as well.
And they did have Physical Science at one time.
They did.
Curriculum Director, what would your thoughts be? Not to put you on the spot, but it's just us.
Oh, my goodness. Um, you know, I'm worried about high school, um.
She's learned a lot about high school.
I, I see it from both ways, but, I mean. I mean, I can't go with his reading.
Well, and I see it from both sides too, and I think if I failed math, now, this, next year, I've got to do two maths. And I've got to pass two maths, so now I'm really under the pressure, and now I may fail English, because now I've got two maths in, and so, you know, that, that's kinda the way I see it. But that's why I was asking if the, if there are students on the radar, then they should be picking them up out there and making sure.
I would hope they would never put them in two maths at the same time, until their senior year. That's usually what we recommend.
What happened to is that, um, the kids didn't get to the next math, like what we're talking about. They went to another elective, because they failed, if you didn't have to pick it up the following year. Which shouldn't happen. Which, which shouldn't happen. That's where the adenuity piece came in, that I would really disapprove. I think that they took the math and failed the first semester.
They need to go back in the math.
Back where it's still fresh, and they have another opportunity to pass it. They can still stay on track and move into those career, um, CPA-type programs. They just have to make up the class, and in other words, they lose an opportunity to get an elective, because they're having to go down that road. So, accountability is the key here. I see in that situation, but this young lady was the exception to the rule.
She was.
But it still comes back to accountability. If she didn't pass the class the first semester, she should have been right back in, looking at an adenuity class or taking an elective.
Right.
And if you look at the pattern, that is what's happened at the high school too.
And, and I think often, I think just watching them do, build the schedule and learn about scheduling, I think that once they had a kid's schedule and the teachers all scheduled, they didn't wanna change anything. So, if Dejean failed English, they didn't wanna put him into an English again, because the classes were already fixed. But you can do that. It's okay to change the schedule second semester.
So, it's gonna hold them accountable as well as the students, which.
They're bringing their schedule to me again tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, I'm all for that, but I'm still a no about that slide. But while we're talking about this, I went to an, a middle school honors day in Wayne County. And let me tell y'all about these honors. Everything was about GPA. Your football honor was not only your football honor, but it was your GPA on that football field. Every sport, every other activity outside of three o'clock, your GPA was announced.
Wow.
Sandy McDonald has a GPA of four point oh. At one point, yes, I did as a senior, but I have a GPA of four point oh, and I also participate in soccer, in track, and in baseball. And I have never seen that before, but those middle schoolers and those high schoolers, everything, all their sports and their curriculum and their schedule revolves around their GPA. And I thought, I'm not gonna forget this. The first opportunity I had to say it, here it is. But I've never, I've been to a lot of schools. We never touch a GPA unless it's salutatorian or the scholarship night. Or, you know, you have to have a GPA to apply for a scholarship or whatever. But that's never discussed around here, but every award, their GPA was in front, right after their name for whatever award or whatever they participated in. And, um, I'm like, hmm, this, and I think we need to. I think we do.
And I'm good either way. If y'all wanna leave it, we leave it. It, it was just put out there to think about, so.
I feel kinda the same way. I could argue either side of it, but I, I think there's a lot of merit to leaving it like it is.
Yeah, me too. It's like Mr. McNair said, have that accountability in it, so.
So, we can take that one off after next week. Yeah, IG, we'll just leave it for. That was, that was one of our simple ones, so that's, I just wanna go back to.
But maybe, I, I mean, do we have, I know the, the eighth graders that are going into the ninth grade. I know they, they get their schedules done or whatever, but do we have a little workshop with the eighth graders that says, okay, when you get to the ninth grade, this is what your expectation is, and if you, whatever? You know, it's not a bad idea. That's not a bad idea mid-year before Christmas break to say, okay, guys, this is where you're at this semester, or some, something. But, I mean, we have academic coaches. We have all these things available. I just think a little, a little more, hey, look at you, look at what you wrote on paper, and this is what you gotta do if this is what you're.
And I know that Jessica does that, because she does individual conferences with teachers, so. I mean, with students, not with teachers, with students.
Well, they probably need some too.
Well.
If you get that student in there, Dr. Williams, if you get that student in there, especially at the end of the first semester, you make sure that the parent understands that as well, that listen, maybe the second or third report card, this is your credit you need. You look, you know, you need to make sure that they understand that they're not gonna get a credit, and.
Or you won't be eligible for dual enrollment, you know, you gotta make.
I think this year, the way that they did with, they let parents come to and do advisement with the students, and they split it up by grade level. It worked really well. So, and they seem to spend a lot more time with the kids, so I'm hoping that's gonna be a, well, that is gonna be the way they do it from, that's gonna be the way they do it. I hope it's gonna help.
And, and what law is being, I hope it's not happening anymore. But any assessment, any course that has an assessment to it, that town should go right back to the human that is teaching.
Yeah, they shouldn't do that on adenuity. We've had that discussion too.
And you would, it should not be in that computer lab, because that's why.
Yeah.
They're never gonna get.
Well, if they didn't get it from the teacher, they're not gonna get it at a computer.
And they, and they're on their own on the computer, you know, yeah. I agree. I agree. All right, so we will take number seven out. And then the last two things I have, well, the last three things I have, I forget, Mr. Mossel's. Discussion of overnight field trips. We have one for basketball camp that is at Bruton Parker College, and one that is out of state for football at University of Florida in Gainesville. And then we have another bus that we would like to surplus. It is bus twenty-one. I wrote in.
That's my old bus.
I wrote, I didn't do a separate sheet and attach it, so when you open that one, there it is. It's in the summary. Um, it does have a little oil leak, but we have this one sold. If we surplus it, um, the Boys and Girls Club has agreed to buy it.
Hmm, nice.
And use it here for our students, so.
Cool, sell it.
And then facilities, I wanna do it at least, see, I got too many pieces of paper. Um, facilities. So, Todd Grant and the board office roofs are being pressure washed. The reel mower is scheduled for delivery. The painting has been. the painting has been completed at Oak Grove, the floor tile has been ordered, that has been a process and a half to find floor tile at a reasonable price. We've had a little struggle with that. Uh, the auditorium A C has been installed. Um, this week, I think when Maso gets back, he and I will open our pest control bids and see, and try to make a recommendation on a new pest control company. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club's moving to, from the annex to Oak Grove. And then we're gonna start in the annex, looking at what needs to be done there and cleaning and painting, stuff we need to do in that building. And then pre-K, we have requested an additional classroom, because we have thirteen on a waiting list. So, we have applied for an additional classroom.
COVID update.
You may, you could just have the notes.
If we get the class, they're going over here.
They're, they're gonna have to, I think.
Yeah. I think that's the most logical place for them.
So, that's the plan, I think that's gonna be, I'm gonna walk through this building again, but I think if I'm gonna need six, five cla- four classrooms plus an additional, this is probably gonna be where I need to put them. And it keeps the traffic flow the same, so.
There's four pre-Ks now?
There's three plus the special ed.
Okay, okay.
So, if we get another one, it will be four plus the special ed. But we have thirteen, and so they told us to go ahead and apply. We will see what happens with that. Uh, no COVID to update.
Sandra gonna teach it.
We'll find any more teachers, we all might be down there taking a day, I don't know.
I know one of the students, she'd be glad to help you.
Doug, you're it.
I'm telling you. Retiree reception is tomorrow at three. At M C A. You won't be able to be there.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, I only have, I think, three of the retirees coming, so I'm hoping we, I hope, I hope people come, anyway. Um. Personnel.
That's from three to five, correct, Dr. Williams?
Well, three o'clock is kind of like a drop in, so yeah. Yes, ma'am. Retiree reception tomorrow afternoon, three o'clock. M C A auditorium. We have five folks retiring. Alright, um, you want me to continue going?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Personnel, I don't have any tonight, the principals should have their final recommendations to me for next week. And then community engagement, I just wrote down the state of the community breakfast. Um, I think most everybody was there, so it was, it was a nice event. Um, I thought it went well, thought it was, showed a good partnership with our community members. City manager did a really good job.
He did a fine job.
He did.
Look at him looking around down there.
That was kind of interesting, it had all of our speeches written, and then they sent us all a list of questions, like, everybody had to throw them out the way.
We needed those questions about a week before we got them.
Alright, so no personnel, no legal, Richard?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Alright, we'll move on down to board comments, anybody have any comments?
I don't, I really don't, no.
Have a safe summer.
Graduation was good, I complained about being outside in the heat, but there's no way we could accommodate all of those people inside the gym.
But it did cool down.
It did, it was nice.
There were a lot of people. And it was very nice. The senior picnic was good, we had the new um, club out at the high school, the Bucketiers. I don't know if y'all have seen anything about them, um, your little K J. Um, but they did a very good job helping us um, set up whatever we needed. They do everything for um, volunteer work, I think they work with the Methodist Church when they're passing out food and things like that. So, if y'all see them out and about, they're trying to raise money for t-shirts for their club.
I know, I need to give them their name.
The Bucketiers is what they call themselves, Ms. Joseph.
Joseph.
Jessica, is it?
Jessica Joseph.
Jessica Joseph, ooh. She is their sponsor, and um, she's done a very good job with them. I think she said they had fifteen members, so. It's nice to see the kids actually giving back and not expecting something in return there.
I got an email from K, K G, K J. K J sent, sent me an email when they, right after they first started, and he just wanted me to connect their Facebook page, like link it, you know, so that we, whenever I share stuff, I mean, it would show up on our page. I said, I'd be glad to, I'm so excited y'all are doing this. I love it when kids are giving back for community service, so.
He emailed me the other night and asked if um, I felt that we would um, partner with them to bring Relay for Life back to the county.
Oh, yeah.
And he wanted, he emailed me like midnight one night and said, how was October the eighth? I said, wait a minute, you have to reach out to the American Cancer Society and let them, you know, tape, I mean, they were just, just like that, I mean.
Take the bull by the horns, man.
He, he really does, he really does.
And so, um, I'm gonna talk to him probably next week when we get back and just let him know he needs to slow down, but that, you know, we can prepare for next year, because it's about fundraising and you can't, between now and October, you're not gonna raise any funds. But I think the other counties have already had theirs for this year, so um, I think it's pretty much over, but, but they're very excited and they're just willing to help out, that's, you know, you don't see that much in kids, you know.
That's right.
And they did a lot that day.
They did. Alright, well, anybody else has anything? We're adjourned.